Don't ever ask me if I'm ready. I'm always ready.
We'll call this work session Monday, December 6th to order. Invitation given by Ms. Tolliver and a pledge allegiance by Mr. Stewart.
May we bow our heads? Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for the many blessings you have in store for our city. Father, please continue to keep your arms of protection around our first responders and every citizen that makes up this great community. Father, please guide us throughout this meeting. I pray this in your son's name. Amen.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First thing tonight is a public hearing for an alcohol license for Mex Tech Foods, Inc., Molly Savedra doing business as Los Palmas Mexican Bar and Grill. Is there anyone here for this? Thank you. Anyone here against this? Okay, thank you. Ms. Phillips, can you do the investigative report?
The applicant is Mex Tech Foods, Inc., Molly Savedra. Type of license, restaurant retail liquor class one. Establishment is Los Palmas Mexican Bar and Grill located at 1402 County Park Road. There were five businesses surveyed with no objections. The nearest church and school footage requirements were met. License application is in order. Health, fire, and building inspections comply. End zoning verification complies.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. This will conclude the public hearing on this. Molly, we'll move this to the December 13th meeting if y'all show up for that, for a vote. Thank you. Number two is the public hearing for the rezoning of 218 Bob Jones Road. Anyone here for this? Thank you. Anyone here against this? No one here against this. Anyone have any questions on this one? We've gone over the investigative reports already, previous, so... Counsel? No one? Okay. This will conclude the public hearing on the 218 Bob Jones. We'll move this to the meeting on December 22nd, and that'll be a four o'clock meeting on that day. Thank you. Number three, discuss the Heritage Center final payments. Mr. Olinese here?
Yes.
And Ms. Ivy.
Thank you. Good to see you all. Well, the Heritage Center addition is open, as you may know, and I hope everyone has had an opportunity to come and see it. It's very beautiful. We're proud of it, and it's a wonderful addition for the city and the citizens. So we come before you tonight, we're closing out the contracts with the KPS Architects and Toller Construction. We have one item, there's a change order to the contract that Toller has with the city for $1,817.88. That work has been approved, it's completed, and so that is a change to the contract with the city, so we're requesting approval of that. Two other items, we're going to request the process or inform you of the final payment for KPS Architects of a little under $1,000, and to Toller Construction, their final payment of $32,400. Those monies will be paid from the funds of the Heritage Center. We're not requesting any funds from the city. You've been generous with the donation and the grant that you gave to the Heritage Center, so we will handle both of those. We wanted to let you know that that will... These payments will close out both of those contracts. And Brenda would like to say a few words.
Okay.
Y'all saw my face an awful lot over the last eight years in trying to secure funding for the addition. I wanted to come back and let you know on behalf of the board how much we appreciate what has happened. The course of this has run over three mayors. It started in 2013 with Mayor Melton Potter, then Mayor Robin Shelton, and now Mayor McCamey, and the councils that worked under those three mayors. We're very thankful for the funding that you gave us for that. As Jim said, the building is complete. We still have just a few minor things that we need to procure, and things that we need to do with the grounds, but other than that, it is a beautiful building. We're so thankful and proud of it. You gave us the half a million dollars, $500,000, and I'm proud to say that with what the Heritage Center pledged and took from our reserves and donations that we had from generous donors, we have raised about $230,000 that has gone toward that building. It is an investment in that property, it is an investment in the community, and it is something that will serve this community for generations to come, preserving the history of Jackson County, of Scottsboro, Northeast Alabama. We have beautiful exhibits that are on display that we welcome everyone to come. We do not charge for any visits that we have to our facility. We accept donations, but we do not charge. We have exhibits that will be forthcoming because in the move, we found things that we had no place to exhibit them, and we have lots of things that will be changed out in the months and the year to come. I would like to remind you that we are having our Christmas open house. We had to suspend that because of COVID for the last couple of years. We invite you and the public to come on Sunday from 12 until 3:00 and see our center and see the decorations that some members of our community have done. We also encourage, if you have children, we will have Santa at the center on the 11th from 1:00 until 3:00, free refreshments and a free photo with Santa, and they will also get to see our addition. Again, we sincerely thank you for what you have done for the Heritage Center and what you've done for the community.
Thank you, Ms. Ivy. Anyone having questions on this?
I don't have any question, but I'd like to commend both of y'all for the hard work that you put into it. It hasn't been an easy task, but y'all have laid in there with it and really done well.
I can tell you, when Mayor Shelton said, once we decided, y'all decided that we would be included in the bond issue, and we sat down and talked with him, he said, "I want Jim Olinese to work with you," and I thought, "Oh, hell." But I can tell you now, I know that members of our building committee have worked lots of long and hard hours, a lot of our board members have, but no one, not myself nor any other board member, has put in the amount of time and effort that this man has. He has saved us thousands of dollars. He has looked at plans and seen things that I could not have determined. So if anybody ever has a project and somebody says, "Jim Olinese is going to work with you," you better be proud to have him on your team, because we certainly are.
Thank you.
Michelle, this is for you, Lee. I do have a question, and after these payments, I know you said this is final, is there any other ones that will have to come before the council after this?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Saying that, we'll move this to next week's meeting to vote on if y'all can spend your own money. Thank y'all. Number four, discuss the ALDOT grant application for the Scottsboro Municipal Airport. Mr. Sandlin?
Thank you. Yes, this would be an ALDOT grant to rehab some of the payments between the two hangars. It would be a 75-25. The state would cover $61,000, and the city would cover $20,347.
And this is just all for payment areas?
Correct.
Anyone have any questions, Mr. Sandlin, on this? That next week's meeting? Thank you. Number five, discuss the inmate feed agreement with Jackson County Sheriff. Mayor, can you go over that?
Sure. If you'll, in your package, you should have a copy of the inmate feed agreement that the sheriff sent a few weeks ago. Bottom line is, we're currently paying $6 per inmate per day for meals, and this will be an increase to $9 per day per inmate.
Okay. Mr. Dahl, we've spoke about this a little bit. Can you tell me, I know you were our chief of police for a long time, and can you go over a little bit of this?
Well, in the past, we always, we haven't always gotten our meals from the county jail. In the past, many years ago, we used to use different vendors around the city, different restaurants. I talked to Chief Latimer this afternoon, and we wanted to try and call some of these people and see what we can do. Get this price a little lower.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions on this? If not, if I could give y'all time to look into that, and we could put that on January 4th work session? Okay.
Mr. President, this actually, agreement starts on January 1, 2022, so we'll need to do it 22nd pretty quickly.
Then we'll put it on December 20th work session. And we'll go back over it then. That'll give you a couple of weeks anyways. And then we'll have a meeting on the 22nd, so we can make that decision by then. Okay, thank you. Number six, discuss the library HVAC repair. Mayor, can you go over that?
Sure. This is a quote, "To repair the, one of the HVAC units in the library. One side's working, the adult side, the side on the children's is disabled, and this is to repair control boards on the gas furnaces," and it's a total of $1,705.
And the library board has already went out and got that?
Yes.
Their quotes?
That's correct.
Anyone else having questions on the repair? Hearing none, we'll move that to next week's meeting. And number seven, the public hearing request for rezoning at Goose Pond Island. We'll go over a few things before we start it. I'll do the for this and against this, you've heard that already tonight. The for this, I'll let them speak, and then against this, you'll raise your hand. Everybody's going to get their three minutes, and then, like I say, I'll call on you each one at a time, and then whoever speaks on against this, if, Kevin, if, Mr. Tucker, if your group wants to respond to it, I'll give you time to three minutes to respond also. Okay? So this is the time and place for the public hearing. Anyone here for this? Okay? Anyone here against this? All right. So, Mr. Tucker, first.
Thank you. My name is Kevin Tucker. I'm here representing the Southern Summit Group along with Mr. Jim Christopher and Mr. Chuck Lawler, Mike Hodges, our surveyor and engineer. Mr. Mayor, Mr. President, distinguished council members, we appreciate this opportunity to again share our project with you. We also respect everyone's opinion and the dialogue that we've had with the neighborhood. We've listened to the concerns. They are property values, traffic, safety. They didn't want townhouses, they didn't want commercial, and no P2 zoning. We've listened, and so we have made concessions, in some cases totally eliminated those concerns. You have a handout before you tonight. I'll just briefly run through a couple of pages, and then we'll go back over the boards again, and I can address basically what the current proposal is. 80.06 acres would be zoned from R1 to R2 single-family, 26.26 acres from R1 single-family to R4 multifamily, and then R1 single-family, 7.6 acres to C3 climatized storage vehicle and boats. We have a list of concessions. There are 11 of them. As I mentioned previously, we withdrew the P2 zoning. We eliminated 70 waterfront townhomes. We would replace those with 25 single-family units. That's a 64% reduction. We've increased the size of the R1 single-family lots by approximately 13%. We've decreased the density of the single-family by 14%. We've eliminated the relocation of the North Shore Drive such that the existing North Shore Drive will remain in place. We've eliminated a future intersection for a loop road that would have been at Lake Point. We've moved that farther to the east to create better traffic efficiency and eliminate a four-way intersection for the folks that live there. We've created a separate and new access that would serve the R4 multifamily, which would also be for construction access to the R2 part, and in essence, that's a parallel road to North Shore Drive, which will relieve traffic from North Shore and Island Drive. We would connect that same road to the R2 such that all construction activity and that development would enter from that new road from Goose Pond Drive. We've agreed to prohibit any construction parking along Island Drive and North Shore Drive for safety and efficiency purposes. We've agreed on the apartments that there would be no rent subsidies. They would be high-quality apartments. And then we've also agreed to work with the residents concerning our pursuit of a TVA-approved boat launch and community docks. One other item that wasn't on the list, we've also agreed to work with the Goose Pond community to help secure a traffic light, if at all possible, at Goose Pond Drive and Highway 79. The other things that we agree to do is, before we get into any final plating, we will come back before the planning commission, as well as the neighborhood, and share our revised master plan. We want to be a good neighbor. We want everybody to see what we're doing and that we're doing what we said we were going to do. We've mentioned covenants, conditions, and restrictions. We will utilize those to...
She, her timer didn't go off, she said.
Okay. In essence, you've got the handout. There's also a second part to it that addresses the economic impact.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Mr. Light?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council, Mayor, Mr. Kenner, Ms. Whitney. Thank y'all for conducting tonight's meeting. I know we've been through several concerning this subject, but it's certainly timely and one that needs attention. My name's Roy Light. I'm a lifelong resident of the area. Having served in public utilities for almost 32 years, I kind of have a unique perspective on the opportunities that we've had over the years for growth. I sincerely believe that each of you has a strong desire to see our city grow and prosper. I suspect that that's probably why most of you got in southeast positions anyway, try to grow our community. To me, this is an opportunity for substantial growth. Over the next 10 years, this project is expected to add about $135 million in homes and infrastructure to our city. The Summit Group has demonstrated what I believe to be a genuine effort to compromise and to work with the residents already out on the island. I believe these are the kind of folks that we want to be doing business with here in our community. We don't get many opportunities like this, so I would like to encourage you to approve the zoning changes that have been proposed by the Southern Summit Group. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Light. So, we'll start the... People who want to speak against this, I guess I can just go row by row. We'll just start on this one.
Hi, I'm Wayman Burka, the guy who wants to be one of your constituents one day. I don't think it's fair to call me against the project. I'm not against it. It's, I think it's just a...
Boy, I've never seen you work.
So, but what I'm concerned about is the road. And I've just dotted down some quick remarks here. It's a thoroughfare, the road that goes there from Goose Pond Island Drive. It's about two miles, give or take, of road, even that that goes to the peninsula, and of course, the other road that goes on down to the Promenade in Oaks. And the road is only 24 feet wide, and that's not a thoroughfare. And as I said, I'm not against the development. I think the mistake, it would appear, was when the original road was put in, I assume, back in the 2000s, they didn't make it wide enough. They didn't think ahead about future development and accommodating all the traffic from, I would say, 500 or so families that are going to live along this corridor someplace. The, and how does this affect the future? Alternative, some say no parking signs, but is that really enforceable? It would require a full-time policeman to keep everybody off the road, and is it fair to the new homeowners who are going to live there, people we don't even know yet? That would mean they could only have limited company. Child's birthday parties, cookouts for the Fourth of July, prayer meetings, consoling people of the loss of a loved one, or maybe watching Alabama play for its 30th national championship. Often, we as ordinary citizens or as local officials do not see problems on the horizon, but we see this one. It's obvious. Is this your future? I'd like to show you this poster here. Over that, we just hooked, and I'll show this to the audience here in a moment. This is North Shore Drive with three vehicles, and the vehicle can barely squeeze through there. I'm not an mathematician, I'm not an engineer, but I know a 10-foot-wide fire truck will not fit through here, and all you need is one. And I'll turn this around and show this, because if you live in that area, this is your future of running this gauntlet, is what it amounts to. And it is a gauntlet. Now, if you address the subject upfront, we can deal with this. If a house burns or a fire truck could not get there, if someone dies because an ambulance cannot get there because of the gauntlet, who is responsible? Who will look back and say, "Who made the decision when this problem could have been averted?" And there's one way in and one way out on this island.
Thank you, sir. That's your theory. Hey, will you turn it? All right. State your name first, please, before you start.
Sure. My name is Tom Ryan. I own a lot. It's right across from the intersection of Goose Pond Island Drive and North Shore Drive. I share the same concerns that Wayman does for safety issues and for protecting the tax base. Gentleman here mentioned that we got 100, or gentleman over here mentioned we got $130, $135 million in new tax revenue because of development on this island, but if the public or future homeowners or landowners perceive that there's a safety issue because they can't get police, fire, and EMS vehicles safely to their house because their house is on fire, there's some kind of disturbance that requires the police to be there, or someone's had a heart attack, some child is choking on something, and they can't get emergency vehicles in there to take him or her to the hospital, this is an issue. So some people who do not yet own property may decline to purchase property, and thereby the tax revenue goes down, or people who own property now but have not yet developed it, the tax revenue goes down. So between the safety issue and the future tax revenue, this is something you need to take into account. Perhaps the developers would consider to make another concession and perhaps agree to widen the road, perhaps in partnership with the city and/or the county to do that, to alleviate that problem. It's an important issue. Cars are not going to be able to get through there as the photo shows here, and the, I think the width on a fire truck is...
10 feet.
10 feet. So we're not going to be able to get through there unless they jump up on the curb, go through somebody's yard. We don't want to do that. So we'd like to have development, we'd like to have reasonable development, we want safe development, and we want to see the city grow. Thank you.
Thank you. Next row, anybody? Anybody raise your hand on this side, and you want to speak against this? Mr. Barkley?
Thank you. My name is Clay Barkley. For, I think, most, all of you know me, and we've been here before. Well, I think most everybody in the room was at the planning commission meeting, and kind of a follow-up from that. I will tell you, standing here, I think the city council has an important decision in moving forward with this, with the rezoning. But I also will tell you, I think the city and the city council has an important decision and important responsibility on following up behind that decision in the event this development moves forward. I'm not going to go in and list all the safety concerns, that's the most of what you're going to hear tonight. I will tell you, there's, you know, a safety aspect from a roadway standpoint and a waterway standpoint, and I'll share just a couple of notes on that with you. Going back, it's been several months ago now, there was a situation on the island out there that involved two of your city employees. They were on work detail out there and had been on the island, and they were on their way out. They met head-on a concrete truck coming in on the wrong side of that divided highway, the median, coming in on Goose Pond Island Drive. That concrete truck was on the wrong side of that median to avoid a decayed, decaying portion of the paved asphalt right there. I think everybody knows where it is. If you don't know where it is, I'll be glad to take you there. That's not an isolated incident, and I'd hate for no that we had an accident there because of things like that that are happening. I bring that up to share with you, we have issues out there, and we want everybody to know that there are issues, and we're asking for help with that. We're asking for help not to wait to the point where some private citizen has to make a phone call to get something done. Things should be recognized out there, and we should be able to get some help with it. When we were at a planning commission meeting, Mr. Tucker got up and made a comment, and I will quote him if he'll allow me, I think it went something to the effect of, "There is construction traffic all over the roads, and there's debris all in the streets." Well, the next morning, before 8:00 a.m., there was a street sweeper in our neighborhood cleaning the roadways. We shouldn't have to get to that point. We need some help. From a waterway standpoint, I think it's a unified effort. Mayor and I had a conversation about this. I know there's some things that can be done, getting Senator Livingston involved with TVA, members of Alabama Marine Patrol, in doing things the right way should this move forward, and whatever happens with TVA, whatever they approve in the waterfront area that this meets up to, none of us here know what that's going to be. But I challenge the city to get involved with these efforts and work with this developer and do things the right way.
Thank you. Before you leave, though, I had a question for you, since you've been to all these meetings. In the HOAs, there's like four different ones out there?
Correct.
Is there anything in any HOAs about parking on the streets?
Yeah, all of the covenants outside of a little bit of verbiage there are carbon copies of each other.
Okay, so it's already in the covenants that people shouldn't be parking on the streets? Just inside the gate part, but not on North Shore and... Okay, that's what I want to know. Okay, not on the city part. Okay, thank you. Mr. Tucker, I'm sorry, I've meant to let you respond to any of these. I've...I've meant to let you respond to any of these.
I echo what...what Clay said. Safety is critical, and that's why, from the very beginning, our covenants' conditions and restrictions will restrict parking from the road. The contractor will sign an agreement that he will not do that, and we will provide solutions with construction access so that doesn't occur. It is a dangerous situation.
Now, while you're there, um, this project would have a new HOA, right?
Correct.
And so, in it, will it address this about parking on the streets?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And specifically, yes.
Okay. Thank you. State your name for me.
Hi, I'm Don Nally. I'm the president of the, uh, HOA for Promenade Oaks, and appreciate you guys letting us talk. I...I applaud the Southern Summit Group for all the concessions that they've made. I'm going to echo what...what you've already heard and what you're going to hear more of. That our major concern is the safety. That street, if...have...have...has the commission members been out and driven that street? It's a long street. It's an access street, and it accesses the other four neighborhoods there. So, you've got a lot of traffic coming through, entering all four of those other neighborhoods, and this is going to be a substantial additional neighborhood. Promenade Oaks has 249 developable lots at the end of that street. We've only got about 50 lots, 50-plus, developed right now. We've got another 200, uh, yet to develop. There's going to be a lot of construction vehicles going back and forth, getting all the way to the back. And as that is an access street, and...and there are some curves toward the end of it, but it's fairly straight, we're concerned that those, uh, vehicles that are not within our control are...are going to be moving, uh, fairly fast. Um, and you're going to...with the current, um, development in place, you're going to add all those driveways right onto that street, front yards, kids playing, people jogging, walking. Uh, it's going to be very difficult to keep additional cars like birthday parties and things like that. Where are they going to park those driveways? They're not going to be long enough to take, uh...to act...have room for all of those additional parking. You're going to have parking on the street unless, like one person already indicated, you have a full-time policeman out there keeping the...the cars off. It's...it's going to add danger. Our preference would be, our hope would be, that if they would turn the access, the driveways, internal to the development instead of external to North Shore, and/or widen that road. We believe that's the only, uh, two ways to potentially avert some of the danger that's going to be added from this new development. So, as far as the zoning, we're...we're not taking issue with that, but we are concerned with the safety that's...that's going to, or a lack of safety that's going to occur with all those driveways added to that street.
Thank you.
Hello. Can I pass out a...
Sure. Can you state your name for me?
Louis Majeris. I'm a resident of the Oaks. Been here for four years. Bought a lot of buildings out...
Retired?
Yes.
Uh, I just wanted to get in front of you. I'm not going to repeat what everybody said, but some interesting numbers. There's already 400 residential lots on the island in the four subdivisions that are there now, or five if you count Promenade Oaks as two. As Don mentioned, most of ours is not developed yet, so there's going to be a need for cranes, heavy bulldozers, earthmoving equipment to get through those roads. If you allow parking on those access roads, we're going to have a problem. Then you have the other issues of cars backing out, kids playing, bicycle riding, fire trucks. I mean, it's just going to be a mess. What you see in my handout, the first picture, is a Scottsboro...Scottsboro City bus trying to get around a parked vehicle. Now, imagine what's going to happen with all that other traffic. This new subdivision's going to put probably 300 to 400 more homes on that island with that traffic. It's all going to have to navigate this mess. So, the solution, if you look on the second page, as Don mentioned, is they're already putting in interior roads that feed out to gates. So, limited access to the...to Goose Pond Island Drive and North Shore. Why not turn the...the outer-facing manor...or estate lots to those interior roads and funnel that traffic out through gates like the other four subdivisions have today to control access and parking on the existing access roads? It's a simple solution. They're already going to do it temporarily for construction traffic. All they need to do is keep it and pave it for the residents, because once they leave and they take away their covenants for their construction people, residents will be able to do whatever they want. And as somebody mentioned, they can park on the street. They have to park on the street. Where are they going to park? We're going to be stuck with that after the...the construction ends. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tucker, you want to respond?
Last page in the handout. It's a loop road exhibit, and we've talked about the loop road and the significance of that loop road as it relates to the whole island, not just this project. But yes, there...there is a bigger, uh, let's say, circumstance, and that is the ultimate build-out of the island. It's a unique situation. Uh, it's...it...part of it is on the water, and development will occur. So, what seems logical is to pursue the development of the loop road as other projects come into play. By doing that, one of the things that we have listed is a west gate for the Promenade and Oaks so that they would tie into the loop road system and could feed directly out to Goose Pond Drive in a very convenient manner. So, we're not just looking at what we're doing at this particular point. We're addressing the bigger situation as it relates to an overall master plan.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker.
Hi, Ms. I live at the Promenade Oaks. Um, if anybody has a concern with the safety issue, it's me. I am all the way in the back at where he is referring to, the gate. Uh, I'm at the very end down there, and I don't, and I can probably bet everybody in that subdivision does not want a gate down there. It was not intended to be one. It's a private community. We don't need people coming through. We already have a problem at our front gate, people following somebody through when the gate opens. It's a safety issue for us. So, absolutely not.
I understand.
Uh, it's private property anyways. Um, so, my issue is, we're all the way in the back. If someone has to worry about a house being on fire and can't get through, it's me. I mean, and we bought our house in our R1 district. When we moved here a year and a half ago, we looked hard. We were going to move to Gunnersville. We found Scottsboro. We fell in love with it, fell in love with that island, and moved there and looked and done my homework. I'm in construction. I'm a superintendent for Feller Construction. I know what to look for when it comes to that, and I made sure that whole island was prominently R1. There was a small portion that was R5 that was not going to really affect much. And now, we're talking about changing all that on everybody's investment and putting apartments in our front yard. I understand Scottsboro needs apartments. I get it. Apartments are needed. There's other places for them, though. Right now, Scott...the city of Scottsboro owns 60 acres attached to Goose Pond Island Apartments. Why can't they be built there? Scottsboro also owns some land at Beaver Creek Apartments, or Beaver Run, whatever it is. They can be built there. Why did it...why are they in the front yards of the highest taxed homes in Scottsboro? That's what I have to say. Safety and the apartments need to go.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Anyone else on this side? If not, we'll move to this side. Anybody? Go ahead.
My name is John Harlile. I'm a builder developer. Uh, I have a home in Huntsville, also have a home in, uh, the Peninsula subdivision. Uh, I wanted to bring a data point up to...to make you guys aware of. Standard residential streets in Huntsville, the minimum width is 31 feet as opposed to 24 feet. Only by exception are you allowed to do a...a reduced width, and that's usually in areas that you have limited traffic, limited access. They call them a treescape sort of situation. So, 31 feet allows vehicles, uh, more of an opportunity to pass. So, uh, should this development go forward, uh, strong considerations should be made to widening, uh, Island Drive and North Shore Drive to 31 feet. Additionally, the sections where there's divided areas that, uh, the pavement is separated with a small island, that's actually creating safety hazards because of some of the incidents that have just been shared. Uh, those may need to be redesigned and actually, uh, remove the islands and...so that if a vehicle is stopped in a single lane, it precludes any passage in that direction. So, people tend to go to the other direction in the wrong direction. So, uh, there's a safety issue right there. Uh, the comment's already been made that, uh, should the, uh, lots that are along Island Drive or North Shore Drive that are proposed being added, their entrances could be placed interior and not add driveways and additional traffic to Island Drive or North Shore Drive. And then finally, the alternative access, sometimes referred to as a loop road, that could potentially give the Oaks and the Promenade, uh, an alternative access out to the, uh, the large four-lane highway. That should be done up front as opposed to at the end of the project in a what-if scenario if the market allows us to actually go forward. So, we need to make sure that...that we're...we're planning in...in the right, uh, sequence of events. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. Thank you all for hearing us and allowing us to come up and talk, and...
Could you give me your name first?
I'm Donna Long. Um, the developer has made a lot of concessions, and we thank you for those, uh, concessions, and we appreciate it. Um, I came up with an idea that if he's not allowed to connect his road, or any of his roads, to North Shore or to, um, our road, you know, the Peninsula Road, if he's not allowed to connect to those two roads, then that eliminates a lot of the traffic flow that would be coming through onto Goose Pond Island Drive. Um, it...many times now, I've gone out, tried to go out or come back in, there'd be a lawn care truck, regardless of all the construction that's been going on. A lawn care truck and trailer is usually close to, I think, around 10 feet wide, or at least eight foot, maybe 10 foot wide. You have another car coming from the other direction. You cannot squeeze through there. It's too dangerous. The roads are curved, and you have driveways before and after some of these curves. So, people coming and flying through there, other people trying to back out of those curvy driveways on a curve of the road is going to be a real dangerous situation for a lot of people, which is why we have so much concern about the amount of traffic flow that's going to be coming in and out. We're not against, you know, the development. We know we need a lot of the development, but we need to keep the new development as a separate entity and not part of what we already have. And if you all...we put our confidence and trust into you to make that final decision to protect us who already live here. We thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tucker, you want to respond to some of that?
I think that the fact of Island Drive, uh, North Shore Drive, we're...we're talking about a public right-of-way and a public road, uh, that was actually developed and built to city standards. It sounds like the...the safety issue is something that can be addressed. Uh, I've heard that the HOA associations actually have verbiage that prevent on-street parking. The city doesn't allow on-street...
Not allowed.
The s...the city does not allow on-street parking. It's a public right-of-way, and parking is not allowed on a road such as this for the simple reason of safety. So, it...it sounds as though it's more of an enforcement. If someone is coming to maintain my lawn, they need to park in my driveway. They don't need to park in the public road. I think it's a bad habit that has continued to happen as a lack of enforcement.
Mr. Tucker. Next, over here. Okay.
I'm Danny Anderson. We live on Peninsula Drive. Just echo the...all the issues on traffic. I tried to print this picture on my computer right before I left, but if I could, I would just show it to you. This is the typical, every day, in and out, on Goose Pond Island Drive. Every day. It's construction traffic for all the building that goes on. Roads are impassable, or, you know, if you want to move, if somebody's coming, you're well, you got to stop. You got to wave them on, you got to wave them out. Buses cannot get by. Fire truck couldn't get by, and that's the current issue. So, the road issue, the traffic issue, needs to be addressed.
Thank you. Anyone else hasn't had a chance to speak yet?
My name is Quig. I'm Sheila Baird. I live in the Peninsula. I just want to give a personal note to the talk about all the traffic. I've almost been hit head-on on Goose Pond Island Drive coming out of the neighborhood because of all the construction traffic, and there is nowhere to go but in the other lane, and because you can't see around the curves, a concrete truck came a hair away from hitting us head-on, and he was flying. I won't even go into the speed issue that we have in there that is insane. I have an handicapped son who walks every morning. I am terrified that he's going to be killed because we didn't get, um, sidewalks in our neighborhood. We have to walk in the street if we want to walk around. It's a real issue, and a lot of this is only going to make it 1,000 times worse. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tucker?
As we've mentioned before, we will be developing sidewalks, and we welcome everyone to utilize the sidewalks. We'll also be developing a community park that will have parking spaces, so that will provide some relief to, let's just say, additional parking. I...I recognize, I've...I've been out there many times myself. Construction traffic is a problem. There's no question about it. Prior planning prevents poor performance, and that's why we, on the front end, are addressing our construction traffic. That's why we are building a second entrance into the development, in essence, a parallel road to North Shore Drive and Island Drive that will provide a separate access for residents. We, too, are concerned about safety. No one wants an accident to occur out there. So, I...I...I can't argue what these folks are saying. It...it is a problem, but I think if you recognize what we have designed and the commitment that we've made, we will follow through on that.
Thank you. Anyone else who hadn't had a chance to speak yet?
My name is Quig. I'm Sheila Baird. I live in the Peninsula. I just want to give a personal note to the talk about all the traffic. I've almost been hit head-on on Goose Pond Island Drive coming out of the neighborhood because of all the construction traffic, and there is nowhere to go but in the other lane, and because you can't see around the curves, a concrete truck came a hair away from hitting us head-on, and he was flying. I won't even go into the speed issue that we have in there that is insane. I have an handicapped son who walks every morning. I am terrified that he's going to be killed because we didn't get, um, sidewalks in our neighborhood. We have to walk in the street if we want to walk around. It's a real issue, and a lot of this is only going to make it 1,000 times worse. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tucker?
As we've mentioned before, we will be developing sidewalks, and we welcome everyone to utilize the sidewalks. We'll also be developing a community park that will have parking spaces, so that will provide some relief to, let's just say, additional parking. I...I recognize, I've...I've been out there many times myself. Construction traffic is a problem. There's no question about it. Prior planning prevents poor performance, and that's why we, on the front end, are addressing our construction traffic. That's why we are building a second entrance into the development, in essence, a parallel road to North Shore Drive and Island Drive that will provide a separate access for residents. We, too, are concerned about safety. No one wants an accident to occur out there. So, I...I...I can't argue what these folks are saying. It...it is a problem, but I think if you recognize what we have designed and the commitment that we've made, we will follow through on that.
Thank you. Anyone else who hadn't had a chance to speak yet? Okay. With that being said, that will conclude the public hearing. This will go on the December 22nd meeting for a vote. That will be at 4 o'clock, so Wednesday, December 22nd. To Wednesday at 4 o'clock. Yes. We will have a meeting next Monday, a work session on the 20th, and then the final meeting of the year will be on the 22nd. So, it's a Wednesday at 4 o'clock. All right. So, that will conclude the meeting. We'll move to delegations. Um, I believe everybody who signed up here got a chance to sp...speak.